My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two roll call, Mr. Lincoln here, Mr. Keg here, Mr. Shaver is not here, Mr. Becker is not here, Mr. Wirt is not here, Ms. Bressler. Ms. Drobnek.
Yeah.
Mayor Keg.
Here.
Mr. Murray. Uh, we didn't have executive session, so we have no agenda amendments coming out of executive session, so I will open the floor to public comment. Jim, what do you got for us? You say that, but.
Generator. On the intersection. So. And so we're buying the neighbors. And of course, my wife found out, I guess either Saturday or Sunday afternoon, when the generator quit. Could you find those games on the television? Also that. If I. That to me is something that should be addressed. I mean, she could do without utilities, but if you have a fire and you don't have a program. That's probably. Definitely, uh, I know everything my school of driving a job job. The yard in Southern Georgia. And that. Something, but I think it might be construction. But then again, it's in the yard where there's a bar. Uh, so I don't know, maybe other people get an idea of using job jobs elsewhere as well. The other thing is, uh. Uh, there's Saturday night, you would load the coal, the wood is open. Playing on the computer and. And finally, I looked at the top of my computer because I was hearing music. Till eleven fifty-three. And I thought, whoa, now wait a couple of weeks before that. There was music to five or ten here for eleven. That's okay. But what? Ten hours, they sing happy birthday to somebody and I couldn't catch the name and sign off at eleven fifty-three. There's at least twelve apartments in that area in motor clubs. I don't know if they sound. This. It is.
There's not necessarily a defined time range for noise, for the noise ordinance to kick in. They can, it can occur at any time. I, there is like a ten o'clock limit for certain things, but noise ordinance can be enforced at any point in time. Was, was this at the motor club, well, the Motor Club in Nitro Bar? I think they had an event this Friday night?
I mean, they had music all along.
Yeah.
Maybe they had the windows open.
Oh, they're doing, they're doing like their raves.
The other thing, who were you called? It was Coes's calls. Like all the recent part and have them.
The non-emergency line, yes.
Yep. It would be the non-emergency line, they'll direct through the county resources back to our department.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. Mark, anything?
I do, actually. Just a couple of times. So I wrote this down because, but I'll write it down, I will build it out, let me say, so. What? Ladies and gentlemen of council. Uh, it's been a few years since I had the pleasure of addressing for our council and I'd like, I'd be lying if I said I missed it. But since early this spring, following the Art Palmer tragedy, I've been planning on visiting during the budget season, the mayor requested counsel. I know what I'm going to ask for is difficult thing to put into motion, did I thought before, uh, but I feel something needs to be said. First, a short history lesson, uh, chief lawyer myself, the chief lawyer was my deputy chief for my right-hand man for the last several years of my term as chief at the Western Fire Department. Even though earlier in our careers, we didn't get along, Chad would agree, uh, Chad and I became good friends throughout the, throughout the years. When they made a difficult decision to step away from the position chief, I knew I was leaving the department in the hands of someone capable of growing the seeds that I had planted. Managing a volunteer fire department like the Western Fire Department is not easy. Not the going to fires part, which is the easy part, but the management part, the personalities, the arguments, the day-to-day little things that are real struggle. Takes different kind of person and Chad understands that and most of them don't. So while we're down at the incident Palmer, which obviously everyone knows is not an easy, easy one to manage on scene, the real work didn't start till after. The fire and after the, the cleanup just began. I told Chad, we're both out on, in South Dakota for the final inspection of the engine. A week after the incident that I was thankful he was chief and I really was because I was glad he had the time to do it. There's no way as a volunteer chief that I would have been able to have the time to take to attend the meetings and everything that Chad was doing to keep this all going. His mission with the borough allowed him the flexibility to be chief during the day. He did the best he could do while managing his two full-time jobs, the codes and the fire department. This brings me to the reason I'm here. I think it's long past due, the borough considers the hiring a full-time fire chief or administrator for the Western Fire Department. Someone to manage the maintenance of the millions of dollars of equipment, the volunteers, including the very successful staffing program. And the catalyst emergency incidents were called to twenty-four seven. Having a strong leadership system within the department will allow us to continue to grow and provide the fire and rescue services to the residents of the level they've come to expect. It is not that I feel we are currently failing in this mission, but that with future unknown, but training in a bad direction, we need to take steps now. The strength in the department before we begin to fail. The hiring of staff is unfortunately the only way we can make this happen. I appreciate you allowing me to take a few moments of your time to express my thoughts and I wish you all the best. That's it. And the Phillies are awesome. I don't understand.
Provided you can watch them at least. The generator still kicked on. Does anybody have any questions or, uh, comments for Mark?
Thank you for the words.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's Mark. All right, uh, seeing that there's nobody online, I'll close the floor to public comment. And we'll go right into ordinances resolutions. So this first one, well, and only one really, is one that came up this past week. We had a, uh, Dean and I and Denise and not quite sure who didn't talk to Mark Woodward, um, regarding French Fry Festival. But he did bring to the attention that the, uh, the fees that we enacted for police and admin and public works are maybe a bit. Outlandish, uh, when actually put into application. So wanted to bring it back up again so that we could discuss potentially making an adjustment to the fee schedule. Jeanette did print out, uh, the scheduled rates for admin, public works, and I believe the police, right?
Yeah, there's.
Oh, there's two-sided and police. Um, so I just wanted to have a discussion. Obviously, initially, when I looked at it, I thought, okay, we're including insurance and everything else into it, but we are not. It's actually a different mix of, uh, different fees and whatnot that kind of get thrown into the, the scheduled rate. From my end of things, when I was looking at it, uh, all these numbers are per hour that you're looking at. So for instance, something like administration is fifteen dollars per hour per employee that is up there, whether it's police, public works. So between, we have three police up there working thirty-ish hours times fifteen dollars an hour for admin. Gets quite expensive for. Something that I'm not even quite sure what it all encompasses and vehicle and gasoline, kind of the same thing. Like French Fry Fest was literally a block away and we're charging him ten dollars per hour for both the vehicle and gasoline. So those were the two things that popped out to me. Obviously, the overtime rates are, I believe, an average of the overtime rates for the police, public works and admin. With that overtime rate, FICA pension and workers comp are all things that are included with their rate of pay. So when they get paid more, their FICA pension, workers comp all increases. So. Those things in my mind should be lumped in with the overtime rate because they are. You know, purposely being put out there for events on overtime and without those events, they would not be working overtime. So. Trying to trim it back to maybe just that, um. But like admin and vehicle and gasoline, maybe that's something that we might want to consider just a flat fee per event. Cause we do have something on there for public works that's not included in this, that it's fifty bucks for the dump truck or for the. Truck with the trailer, that it's supposed to be fifty bucks per hour plus the public works rate.
Yeah.
So. So for something like public works, the vehicle is already kind of baked in if they're utilizing it for the tune of fifty bucks an hour. So there's some things that can probably be adjusted. Uh, Mark's bill went up.
How much? Over eighteen hundred dollars.
Over eighteen hundred dollars between this year and last year with the new fee schedule.
Two thousand and the neighborhood of two thousand.
And when his event costs twenty-seven hundred dollars last year and we're asking an extra eighteen hundred, I mean, it's not quite doubled, but. You can understand the hesitancy from private business owners wanting to lump things. To pay those rates.
Although now that I see this, I mean. If it's a cost that goes up for us because of the overtime. It's justified and maybe the year before that we weren't loading some of this in or what, what was the change between two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three?
There was a snafu last year where I accidentally used the fee schedule from the year prior to instead of the new, the new fee schedule.
Okay.
So by the time we figured it out last year, it was already too late and I already gave them the bill.
Gotcha. So, so it was really last year he got undercharged.
Yeah, last year, last year was the snafu.
Okay.
This year was a snafu too. I had, uh, uh, some documents I had, I was kind of forced, I was out sick for a week. So I was coming back trying to get everything together and when I got it together, I got it together pretty quick and just sent it out, but I thought I had the right numbers. Were the right numbers. So didn't realize that I went off of a bad number from last year. So it just, it snowballed.
That's fine. Yes. So in other words, this is not a whole lot different from our two thousand twenty-two schedule?
Five dollars.
Right.
And I think when we first made the big jump from the eighty. Five, we're modeling after six schedule because they charge ninety fifty now for their. Hundred fifty, that's where I guess. See, but there are many other different numbers out there for different municipalities. It just depends on how we choose to.
Sure. Because I think he was under the impression that maybe we were charging for things like health insurance and other fixed costs that don't go up. But we're not. These are, these are real numbers.
Yeah, like I said, the only concern of mine was like the admin and the vehicle and gasoline, depending on how many hours that we're charging them for. And how many hours we actually occurred for administrative costs and.
Right.
That, that might be something that we could bring back to earth a little bit.
Right. That makes sense. Do we know what we're incorporating into that fifteen dollars an hour for administrative fees within each of these rates?
I, I, yeah, the schedule there, I, I put it as cheap as hourly rate. And thirty hours. Of fifteen dollars now, four hundred and fifty dollars, which would break to, uh, really longer than eight hours. I didn't know if that would make, if that would play into the fact that maybe he was at the event for two hours. I mean, it's all subjective, really.
Yeah.
Plus, that's also the highest paid person there.
Chief.
Yeah.
And I know.
He's also salaried, so.
That's what I was gonna say.
Overtime rate.
Right.
For the chief, correct, but somebody like, uh, just a regular sergeant like Wayne is currently our highest earning with the overtime rate.
Right. I guess my question is.
Just by tenure.
Is that administration line item recapturing time spent in like the planning efforts for these events or is it?
Payroll processing.
Yeah, I guess what is that additional work that we're charging for?
And I would say it definitely varies by event. So we have the event committee that meets once a month, review everything that comes in for events that are coming up. And some of them are more time-consuming than others. For instance, a five K. That, uh, you know, they're asking our police to map out a five K for them. Well, that's not exactly, A, their, their regular day job. So it's, you know, it's an extra event. Uh, but they're lending their expertise towards that. And I know that Chad has spent countless hours trying to make five K routes that work within the borough.
Right. Um, so I guess my question would be rather than.
But then others are, you know, open and shut.
Right. So I guess if we're trying to recoup that through the rate on the day of, or should we instead take that out and. Charge them an hourly rate for that planning?
It might fall under something like the administrative services.
Yeah.
They require additional planning.
Right. Like if we're planning out a route for a run. There should be a cost to that.
Yeah.
Or, and would we have the flexibility to say to the French Fry Fest? We really didn't have a lot of planning involved and also the police car just. Drove a block and just sat still. We will subtract the twenty-five dollars per hour from that event. Like, would it have that flexibility built into it so that when it makes sense, we can remove?
I would think there's always, so with planning committee, obviously they're taking time out to discuss these events that are not, you know. That are usually private, privately run events in this case with French Fry Fest. So, you know, is that something that they should be paid for? Probably, but.
I mean.
Something like French Fry Fest was, I mean, maybe a fifteen-minute discussion.
Like that meeting of the public event committee is a function of the job, right? Cause we need to be knowing what's going on and how it's going to, if you're spending time beyond that specifically working on. Event details, whether it's staffing for larger events like a bike race where we have everyone and their brother working. Or coordinating with outside departments to get additional manpower. I think things like that make sense to charge for because it's above and beyond. Typical role. Than anything.
Oh, I, I kind of. I kind of agree with Chris in some sense, like maybe it would. Be who us to charge, like after the fact, like for the, the hours put in or for the mileage. You have a, a, a truck going up and down ten hours for eight hours during Art on the Ave, they're using a lot more gas than a police car going up. The French Fry Fest incident.
Yeah, those cars are also running the whole time, the police cars.
Right.
That's why I like the idea of a flat fee in, in some of these cases, because when you're adding up like twenty-five dollars an hour times eight hours.
For some, for a car that's eighteen hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For a vehicle that's not necessarily moving or doing much, like, yeah, I, I can see that there would probably need to be some flexibility in this.
I think that if you do it, that it's not a flat rate, you're going to get people that are going to push back and be like, whoa, I saw the car sitting there, so I shouldn't have to pay for that. Or you're going to get people that are maybe going to kind of try to nitpick it more to save money. Or if it's a flat fee, you can say, hey, this is a cost for everybody.
And also when you're, you're charging after the event and they can just not pay.
Yeah.
Chasing after them to get the money.
Yeah, that's true.
I think that's, I mean, that's what we do with the dump truck and the trailer. Or the pickup with the trailer, you know, we have it in our fee schedule, a per hourly rate. So it's not incorporated into our manpower rates. And that probably makes more sense. It, it doesn't make sense to have. Vehicle time incorporated into the hourly rate of our people.
I agree.
Those were the two things that I identified.
Still have an argument of, you know, it's per hour. Are we charging based on the number of hours of the event or is there some other metric for, again, a police car that maybe just goes and sits there to. Help reinforce blocking traffic? Is that the same rate as? Ones driving around, you know, controlling an event?
Guess this is maybe something that could be determined in the events committee meetings, like sitting there saying, how long do we need this car there for? And you can kind of add all that up. Say this is what it would be based on what he just said. How long?
A lot of times they're utilizing vehicles as almost like additional blockades.
Yeah.
Right, uh, for those events. So they're not just sitting there and on, they actually do serve a public safety purpose as well.
Sure, but so for festivals, when we have the public works trucks sitting at Fifth Avenue blocking. Like, are we char, would that be something where we're charging an hourly fee for those to be there? Or are we charging for the time that one of our crew took to drive it up there and drive it back while they're working that day? I don't know. I, I don't know how that, so I tend to agree. If in that case, it's just a barricade. What are we charging for? It's not getting use unless it has to act as the barricade. Physically.
Is this CRF getting charged like this too?
In gun.
In gun, sorry, in gun contribution.
But if they were a for-profit entity, yeah, they'd get charged that, that rate.
So the difference is they, they have proceeds that come back to us.
Among the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they have brought back and grant money and everything else, you know.
Yeah.
Why does it seem like the schedule has a nonprofit group, police service cost of around a dollar compared to a one fifty for for-profit things?
Is it a flat fee of a hundred bucks?
Hour.
So it is per hour. A nonprofit. Organizing a five K.
Where they keep the proceeds.
Like, I think the foundation is, not only is it a nonprofit, but it directly benefits the borough that's its own purpose.
Yep. Does anybody have any other thoughts on the fee schedule?
I agree that it shouldn't necessarily be, you should really consider not including it in the, the actual labor cost specifically. Cause not every, not everybody is using a vehicle. You know, you have cops that are going to be there and there's only one vehicle there. There's seven police officers or with public works, there's only one truck there, but there's seven guys.
Yeah, that's another good point.
Yeah.
Doesn't, that's because we're lumping it in with personnel, it doesn't necessarily equate.
Not everybody has a truck.
Right.
With me, it's different. Like with my job, I have a truck, like every technician has a truck. So that's automatically factored in and just always been that way, but it's different when you have a small town like this, you don't need. Not everybody needs their own truck to be driving around.
All right. Do we want to hammer out what a new rate looks like now or do we want to? Think about it now that it's been introduced and.
Honestly, for the personnel hourly rates, I think we just need to eliminate the admin and vehicle and gas charges.
Should be a separate thing.
And then separately, a discussion of. How is pre-planning time invoiced? You know, with the rest of the time, because the invoices are after the event, right?
Yeah.
So we know exactly on that day, how much effort was spent.
Don't get me wrong, there is like gasoline costs for police to have them running and sitting up there. So there is a, an additional cost. With having that officer utilizing a vehicle that otherwise would not have been used.
Right, yep, but if they're utilizing a bicycle. Their cost maybe not.
I don't believe that they were this fast time, but.
Yeah, but the point is, I think it needs to be completely separated from the personnel cost.
Yeah.
It can be an additional cost, that's fine if we're recouping money. The cost, you know, the borough, but I think structuring it so that it's separate and. You know, we do have personnel costs. Is it this Friday?
I agree.
An à la carte.
Yep, it would be this Friday.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. How about we do this?
Like what you're actually using.
Yeah, the, the à la carte approach, I think is a smart way to reference that.
Let's yank out the admin and vehicle and gasoline and move this fee schedule rate to only personnel cost for now. We have a Friday meeting of the, uh, event committee.
Yep.
That we can discuss the other portion of this discussion there and then bring a recommendation to council for our next meeting.
That sounds good.
So are we removing admin from all three of these schedules and gasoline from the two where vehicles from. To where they are listed?
I think so. Think so. And then we will determine, I think so, very similar to like the dump truck and pickup truck, the trailer that we charge per hour for that. You know, maybe it's coming up with what our cost is additionally utilized those vehicles and things like that. Or additional admin costs, which might just fall under the sixty-dollar admin fee per hour.
Right. Yeah, if we, if we spent ten hours in planning for an event. About ten hours needs to be invoiced at whichever rate is appropriate. Now, and now that we're removing those day-of rates for admin and vehicle and gas. Maybe it's not the overtime rate because it's within the normal workday, but.
That's a good point, Tim.
Our lowest rate we have, which would be the admin rate.
So subtract out twenty-five dollars from all of those rates.
Only fifteen from the admin.
Yeah, it's only, and only fifteen from the admin. But if we are looking at lumping in like a police chief or someone running a five K, obviously their overtime rate, well. They're salaried anyway, but if we get the pass to. You know, Sergeant Phillips or Sergeant Marks or whoever to run the logistics of creating a new five K or. We've run into that more than once in the past year, so.
Sure.
Yeah, should we keep that one a little bit higher? We're also lumping in additional administrative staff on the police side at that same rate.
Well, the other thing too, a, as we keep moving forward with the, the event committee getting stronger and tighter as it is, that. When they come to us asking for an event, maybe we can do is work up like a, a dummy quote for them saying, hey, listen, this is what to expect. Cause if you're going to have two cops there, you're going to have two public works there, running back and forth all day doing trash. This is what you're going to expect at the end of it. We haven't done that in the past. So I think that's what happened with this sticker shock fixing it to give back to them. It was like, whoa.
Yeah, just let them know.
Yeah.
Like I said, we just recently had that five K down there that they were communicating back and forth, trying to figure out a five K route. We had it with Laney's last year, uh, that we were struggling because they wanted to run the same route that was not conducive to. Yeah, the, the borough right now and tried to have them go back to the previous one, but then Chad also came up with like three alternate routes for them.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, that is time that adds up considerably for an event that, uh, didn't even happen. So.
I mean, the other thing, depending on how granular we want to get, is we could develop. Staff rates for each classification, you know, patrolman, sergeant. Chief, admin on the police side.
They're all and then pretty close to each other unless you have somebody that's like stepping up over five years or whatever.
And if this OT rate is a blended rate based on. The average across the board, then we should be good.
I can tell you, public works, the highest, uh, overtime rate is about fifty-two seventy. And the police rate, uh, was just shy of eighty-two, the highest overtime rate. So they're all pretty darn close to. Averaging in.
Plus, we don't really.
Unless they're OIC.
Unless they're OIC, then OIC tax on additional, right?
And aren't we providing.
Mark.
The day of an event, we're providing the officers who are available. We don't want to be.
Four oh one running.
What?
Yeah, that's why he's out of here. At the apartment. Kind of sounds that way. Roll melded siding from side of residence does not see smoke or fire.
Sorry, sounds like a codes and a fire problem.
Yeah.
If only we had somebody who knew both.
Yeah.
And on, on the corner.
Yeah. I don't know who, uh, Texas, Texas Poon Tapa is, but don't let them in.
Yeah, I would leave them out.
Yep.
Texas Poon Tapa.
Yeah, that's, that's a no for me.
Big no.
Four, four oh one running avenue would be across the street from the Courtry Apartments.
Correct.
Oh, one running avenue. That's a house.
Yeah.
Oh, right on, right on.
It was on the north side of the street. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll do that. We'll have event committee talk about it on Friday, make a recommendation to council for our next meeting, which I believe is a Saturday morning. Um, so we'll do that, we'll have event committee talk about it on Friday, make a recommendation council for our next meeting, which I believe is a Saturday morning, God bless us.
It's Carrie's day.
Yeah, oh boy. Alright, so subtracting, so subtracting out the admin and vehicle and gasoline cost would bring the lease rate down to one hundred and five dollars. The public works rate down to sixty-five dollars and the admin rate down to forty-five dollars, that's what we wanted to do for the admin.
I'm glad we went over this.
Yeah, it's a, I think it's a legit thing to. Having the breakdown is very helpful.
And maybe somebody should review with Mark Woodward, how it's gonna be next year, like right now, so it can sink in.
I had a conversation with him previously and I will do it again. Just to let him know everything that we've gone over to make sure that this is only covering our costs, so.
How much money would that take off of Mark Woodward's bill, those changes?
I think it's a, an eight hundred dollar difference. Yeah, that it's eight hundred dollars more than what it was. That I originally gave him.
Which was last year's numbers, yes.
Again.
Yeah.
Again, you're talking about a normally a sep- twenty-seven hundred dollar event that ballooned to forty-five hundred. Right now, it'll get shrunk and back a little bit, so it's, it will still be more expensive, but I think this more accurately captures. Our rate.
And he'll have time to build it into whatever he's charging his bangers.
Yeah. Oh yeah, it was all rounded up.
Yes.
Okay, I see that for one twenty-two to one thirty, there you go, it was rounded up.
What about the, what about the public works, should that go down to sixty? Yes, I say sixty for public works.
Sixty.
Hundred and forty-five.
Paul Janson's rolling over right now.
I know he is. I know he is.
Of everything he would recommend right now.
Yeah, well, yeah, but he can't argue with this.
What do you think about this?
Yeah, no, no.
Doesn't say.
Texas Poon's happen.
Yeah, same person, oh yeah, Texas, yeah.
Yeah, that's still a no. Still a no, I don't feel like being porn bombed tonight. Okay, so police rate one hundred, public works sixty, admin forty-five. Feel good on those?
Yep.
And then I won't rehash it again, but we'll talk about it Friday, alright? So looking for a motion to amend the fee schedule to the rates that I currently just said, so moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg, second by Ms. Drabnik, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Alright, let's hop into the fire department budget.
Carrie, do you need to get anywhere? Do, did you wanna do yours first?
He needs to get somewhere, yeah, we can bump his up quick. Um, alright, so let's, uh, move public works above budget, actually Dean, we'll do your stuff too before budget, pulling the budget.
I can wait.
Sorry, uh, so KT did have an action item for us, it was consideration to extend one part-time seasonal public works position. Through November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and I'm sure KT can tell us all about it.
Yeah, um, I don't know if Amy's been cut down by the playground yet.
I was just there.
Did you see the steps?
Saw that, looks great.
Yeah. He showed me pictures.
That's my one, my one summer helper, one of my employees is doing that, they're moving all the, um, the slate we've been talking about for seven, eight years now. They're going piece by piece, moving all the grout out of it, re- anything that's loose and falling up, resetting any broken ones, resetting, I wanna have it done before. The haunted house and stuff, I don't want anybody tripping down and tripping hazards.
One of the things.
On the steps down the side.
Yeah, down the side, we're doing the whole platform, back, uh, this top piece.
I saw you working on the top.
Yeah, we did the one whole flight, the steps going down to one side, one to the other side, then we'll work on the platform down bottom. Um, I don't know if Amy's drew by the garage. But that's my building I put out back, middle Stuart building.
I could see, you can see it from four twenty-two.
Like you said, we, I looked around, there's forty-seven thousand from the command building, it was, I put, we had it in the budget this year, it was like seven thousand dollars for me to put one up. That way I can get, or, uh. Our new, um, yeah, lift, it's, and it's been sitting outside, I'm trying to hide undercover. My new, uh, loaders down there sitting outside, they're gonna be sliding inside, they're gonna be covered and locked away. Uh, with the whole thing with the memorial down there in front of the, uh, firehouse. I'm gonna have to redirect all that water down there. I had to reroute, uh, had several meetings with, uh. Newcastle Johnson, uh, Newcastle, which I'm gonna tell you right now. What he brought to the table ain't what he's bringing to the table. So, but yeah, regardless, we had issues prior to it, today and he met with you, uh, EIC, whatever it was. I actually called Dean that day because that kept on, it keeps flooding down from his name, it's washed down in front of his driveway and stuff like that. It needs to be direct redirected or regardless.
Where are we talking about?
In front of the firehouse, uh, the community, we put the community garden in for the farmers.
Oh, right, where like the rip raft, right at the old.
That rip raft don't work.
Yeah.
It gotta go.
Well, it's also full of stuff that shouldn't be in there. But it's also undersized, I think.
Yeah.
Cause it's always spilling down the hill, right?
Yeah.
Over the sidewalk.
So we, we have a plan, we, we have a plan to redirect all that. I wanna start working on curbs next year, um, with some of the money we got. But we're able to see what, how far our roadway stretch this year. I got a two hundred fifty thousand dollars from Oak Terrace to Penn Avenue, to Green to Fifth Avenue. If we get three hundred thousand, there's another program out there where they're doing overlays with, uh, they put a fabric down. It cuts your milling in half, in half, which is your big cost to street repair, so. I wanna start jumping on curbs this year, so I'm not running next year, trying to beat. Uh, the roadwork coming in, so I wanna continue working.
I was gonna say, if we could circle back to the action item.
I wanna continue working, I need an extra body.
There we go.
Before I had to ask if we pulled the zoning permit for that lean-to or had the building.
Was the lean-to there, it took down. Was the lean-to we took down.
Replacing kind.
Yeah, he's just replacing.
Yes, but. I need to continue running, but now understand, I think we have like, there's probably four or five thousand left roughly. Yeah. Uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go over that. But at this point here, after this week, they're gonna drop down to twenty-four hours a week. It's gonna be three days a week.
Now we have twenty-nine hundred in the budget. That's as of last.
Okay.
Payroll next week.
They drop it down to about two thousand, it's thirteen hundred, he's getting thirteen hundred an hour, so it's five hundred.
Twenty-nine plus payroll is usually, so it's just, it's just your son now, it's not?
No, it's just the one.
Just, okay, so I think that would be like a thousand dollars for eighty hours.
Yeah. Yeah. When that runs out, I, I don't wanna expand what I put in there.
That sounds like you probably get an extra month.
He's gonna be part-time.
Yeah, it's gonna be twenty-four hours a week.
Oh, even less.
Yeah.
It'll be that last period.
I'm willing to expend the funds that are still left in that GL code this year, but not beyond that. As long as there's still money remaining, well, I'm comfortable going to whenever that end date is, then.
I appreciate that.
So do we have to?
It'll be October one.
So we'll just change that.
We'll just keep an eye on it as we're going through.
Yep. You could say like November twenty-second or whenever the money runs out.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we'll just have to make that motion then. Uh, does anybody have any other questions on the request? Other than that, uh, the consideration, uh, to extend the one part-time seasonal public works position. Uh, through October. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
I can.
Second by Ms. Drabnik, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm all opposed, motion carries. Right, uh, Dean, let's just get yours out of the way.
Okay. It's only two items.
Well, that should be.
Uh, alright, so the first one, action item is consideration authorized closure of Summit Street from th- North Third Avenue. To North Fourth Avenue for a block party event, like basically has happened the past two years up there. It's a community event, they keep the, the fire lane open, going up and around, all the neighbors get together and have a hoo-ha.
And what's the date?
Twenty-third.
It's not on here.
In the time?
I have it on my desk, sorry.
I think it's eleven AM to eight PM. I have a flyer hanging on my fridge.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, that's my neighbor.
Northside people.
Eleven, uh, eleven to nine.
They got a generator up there on the corner they can use.
Maybe they'll have the Phillies game on for you, watch it outside.
It's gonna be music.
A bounce house.
And a bounce house.
They got all their signatures from the neighboring, uh, neighboring homes in the area as required. Uh, does anybody have any other questions on the block party event?
Nope.
Seeing none, looking for approval of the block party event.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms., uh, Bressler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And last one is consideration to approve the wine missing area homecoming parade event on Friday, October seventh. With the bonfire.
With the bonfire.
I think October seventh is a Saturday.
Yeah, it says October.
Based on the information they provide.
Yes.
Oh, right, because we're thirteen.
Let's go with the thirteen.
Is that the bonfire?
So it was a rough day today.
It's alright, you're good.
Just wanna make sure we got the correct dates. Alright.
We can go over it again at the, the event committee Friday.
October thirteenth, there we go. Friday the thirteenth.
Alright.
It's great, originally it was supposed to be the haunted hayride and we move stuff around.
Right.
Yeah, so they do have minimal street closures that we usually waive correct, they, they walk down.
They just start roving closure, like we don't.
Yep.
Yeah.
Up as soon as the last people are through.
It, it start, it starts up here at the school and then works down zigzags to the field house and then, and they finish up down there. Where the fire company will monitor the bonfire form.
Does anybody have any questions on the homecoming parade event? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Bressler. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Now Chad.
Now we can go into Chad, yeah, we don't have any other reports.
Sorry, Chad.
That's alright, I'm here until we're done, so. In your packet, you have a copy of written out cheat sheet, so if anything I go over tonight, you have questions about after tonight's and budget, actual making the budget doesn't occur for many more weeks. You have any questions about anything I'm talking about tonight, it's in that little cheat sheet, but what for, gonna, what I'm gonna do tonight is just work right down that Excel spreadsheet. I'm just gonna start at the top and go down through each one of the line items real quick. Um, if you have any questions about a line item as I'm buzzing through, just stop me, we, we stop and talk about whatever you would like. Alright, so starting at three oh one, one fifty, which is our, our fire tax income, Jeanette has projected that. For twenty twenty-four to be forty, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Uh, below that, delinquent taxes, projecting there to be delinquent taxes in twenty twenty-four that we recover for twelve thousand. The foreign fire insurance money that comes in and goes to the relief association every year is projected to be twenty-four thousand, which is what has been. Set by the insurance company organizations and it's pretty much stays the same. So those are the projected. Uh, I'm sorry, going down further, so we've got no vehicle claims projected, no, so this year, we're projecting the sale of the old engine. Hopefully would like to see in the range of forty-five to fifty thousand dollars for the old engine, we've had two bids come in, or not two bids come in, two inquiries come in. Have yet to receive any actual bids in the mail, but they have until September fifteenth to submit them.
You're hoping for twenty twenty-three to have that?
Uh, would, would like to, so is, if, if we were to get bids and the bids would be approvable, council will be acting on them September eighteenth.
Okay.
So at that point, if, if we have a bid that council likes, the truck can go right after that. Uh, so we have, so when we reconfigured bonds. The fire department received a chunk of savings, that chunk of savings was put into the, the special reserve. So in the special reserve, there's about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in that special reserve. Um, some of that is earmarked for the replacement of utility in two thousand twenty-five. The rest of that is in there and earmarked for potential door replacements either this year or next year. So in, in twenty twenty-four, the goal would be to transfer thirty-three thousand from the special reserve into. The, uh, budget to help pay for capital items, which we'll talk about later on down in the budget.
This is primarily because the next fire truck, we're looking at doing a bond for, correct?
Correct.
That was Paul Janson.
Paul Janson's advice was to, to instead of putting money in a capital reserve. Where people are paying for something now that they're not gonna, may not get an opportunity to be serviced by ten years from now, he didn't think was right to do. So the way the fire department, uh, taxes are built. When we pay off the current general obligation bond, which I don't foresee the borough rolling over just because of the incredible rate that's on it now. When that bond is done, the money that the fire tax or fire department budget contributes to that will then be free. So the, the plan then would be to roll into a new bond for the new truck, which would get paid off in that ten-year period with that money that already is existing within the fire tax.
And the current bond's done in nine years anyways.
Right, which would be when we'd be looking to, when the latter truck would be replaced.
Sorry, just wanted to re, fresh memories.
Perfectly fine. Alright, so that's pretty much the revenues on the fire side, moving on to the expenses, starting off, uh, with a, with a new GL code.
Mark.
Yeah. Starting off with a new GL code, so we were having problem getting fire police volunteers to assist with these non-emergency events on Penn Avenue. So what I talked with, uh, Wayne and Chad Marks about, and I, I believe I talked to Sam at one point about too, was, um. Giving them some sort of incentivization similar to what we do with the staffing program. So this year as a trial basis, what we did for Arts on the Avenue was we, we incentivize, uh, fire police. Personnel to assist with those events, now working with Chad Marks, he only requested assistance for them. In the initial shutdown four-hour phase of the event, once everything was secured, he felt comfortable with his manpower controlling the scene. Uh, I think he would say that the program there worked very well, like we were able to get more manpower from our fire police than normal. To help with that shutdown. So we planned to do the same thing again with, with Fall Fest here, so. I'm not exactly sure where that would go, whether that would go in a police budget or my budget, because they're fire police, I thought it would make sense to put it in this budget.
Everybody wants to claim them.
Right, right.
Don't trip all over yourselves.
So what we did is we did it just like, just like, uh, a staffer for the fire department, we incentivized them at a rate of, of fifteen dollars an hour. For those four hours, and I think there were four of them, so equaled out to about two hundred and fifty dollars for that one event. And then obviously we do that for Fall Fest, that would be five hundred, I don't know how the new chief is gonna feel. About this or the manpower usage, I don't know if they're gonna request more manpower or less manpower. So I put in a number of a thousand dollars there just as a, a placeholder, I don't think, I don't foresee it being more than that for sure, possibly less. If, once again, if the police still are requesting fire police presence at these events, it greatly helps us drum up some manpower. For people who are giving up, you know, four to eight hours to stand by at these events. Alright, moving on to the next line item down, the daytime staffers. Um, were projected to be a little bit under budget there this year, that's because the program, there's sometimes where shifts aren't filled, the goal is to always fill all of the shifts. So, um, I, I projected our year end to be what it was budgeted for. Even though we're gonna come in under that, so based off of what that budgeted number was, I applied the three point two five percent. To that, to come up with the sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three in twenty twenty-four. Um, same thing with the next line item down, the salaries of the officers. Um, I applied the three point two five percent to last year's budget number to carry that over into two thousand twenty twenty-four. Um, I applied the three point two five percent to last year's budget number to carry that over into two thousand twenty twenty four. Fire department administrative expenses. We budgeted nine thousand this year because there was some uncertainty as terms of the reporting program. And uh who we were gonna have to use. There was reports that the program was gonna be doubling in cost. Um, the state worked some things out and and didn't pull the trigger on some things which allowed that to stabilize. So we're gonna be we're gonna be under budget uh there this year by a bunch. Um, going off that information, we have much better I have much better information for next year in terms of what we're gonna need there in terms of that that. Program or that uh software. So I'm projecting sixty five hundred in administrative next year. Over the nine thousand that it was this year. Turnout gear was projected this year for uh twelve thousand. Uh, I'm asking for fourteen thousand next year. The the price of the the turnout gear materials have gone up considerably. And that that increase, once again, is just to continue. We we average about three sets of turnout gear, full sets of turnout gear out of that money. And that increase would maintain us, would maintain us getting the three sets of turnout gear for for two thousand twenty four to replace old outdated gear. Uh, general expenses. I project to be a little bit under budget, but I think ten thousand is a good place to remain. It's been there for for many, many years and always ends up right around that that. Part of the line item. Um, it's a little bit low right now. I've got some things, some grant writer fees that are are still coming in that get you get paid that are just gonna are gonna bump it up. Closer to that year-end amount. Uh, legal services, we budgeted a thousand. We knock on wood, didn't use any this year. But I think a thousand is a good thing just to have in the budget in case we have some sort of issue come up where we would need Dan's assistance. Uh, communication was budgeted for twenty three. Two uh twenty three thousand two hundred in in twenty twenty three, I made an increase there of about eight hundred, which is to compensate for the projected increase. In the comp center's dispatching fees in twenty twenty four. Vehicle maintenance was uh budgeted for two twenty thousand this year. We're gonna be well over budget in vehicle maintenance this year. Um, the engine. Uh, due to the delay in the new engine coming, we had to run the the old engine in for a bunch of months longer than we would have intended to. And in that period, we had a bunch of brake issues that popped up that totaled about ten thousand dollars in in brake issues.
Can we backcharge the manufacturer for that? They did give us extra money.
Manufacturer, right, did did give did give the borough back some money based on money that was earned off of the interest that they had accrued while they were holding the money. So the truck was done. So they did give some back.
Something.
Um, so I left that I left that item or that number at twenty thousand. Um, once again, I I think that's if you look back at the the previous budgets. Uh, that I think is a fair number. It's lower in fact than than what it ended at in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, but we're dropping that one frontline piece of apparatus by combining the two. So I think twenty thousand is a good place to stay.
And most anything major should be warranted, right? On the new truck.
Correct. Yep.
How long is that warranty left on their engine? Or I mean on the ladder?
Uh, no, the fact that bumper to bumpers are all going. I think drivetrain still has, there are some things like the drivetrain, I think has a a ten or fifteen year warranty. I would have to check them for reference, but the the normal like bumper to bumper, they expire after a year or two. All right, so it takes us off the front. Gasoline. So gasoline. Uh, were projected to be over budget. There based off of the year ends. I don't know how many more times Kerry is gonna be ordering diesel fuel, but. Um, as we get closer to the end of the year, that that number will get clear. Um, and then I just carried that eleven thousand over to next year.
Do we see any price reduction based on buying involved? I don't know how it works.
We we pay uh. What was it? Three twenty something a gallon for diesel right now? We we don't pay the taxes on it. We we used to be a part of a consortium that would go around and they would come and bulk deliver the stuff. But we ended up finding out that Lefler Energy was actually cheaper because they're local and they would just come and do it for us whenever we need that. They even come to like the fire scenes if they're running low on the fuel, be in there all night, they'll bring a truck and right to the scene and build up.
And I don't see him being too far away in some of that. I don't know. They they left their trucks for a long time down to fire scene for farmers and stuff like that.
It was getting close, so it was getting close to where we were. We're gonna have to call for a few truck and then the the scene stabilized enough that we were able to break trucks free and and go get. Them fueled up before they came back. All right, so then moving on to the next line item is the uh fire company vehicle insurance, which is the number that that comes from Jeanette. I really deal too much with that. Uh, vehicle claims and repairs. Um, we had the incident with the ladder truck at the bumper, ladder truck bumper at the corner of Elm Street and the alley there behind Silk. Um, that's why that number is uh so much higher than the budgeted number in twenty twenty three. Don't per don't plan on having to use vehicle claim next year, so. Pumping that back down to what it was previously. Okay, so should we make that a thousand then?
Just to cover the deductible if there is something.
Okay. All right, I would like to amend what I gave you for that to be a thousand.
That's why we do this.
Next line I am down, workman's compensation insurance premiums. Uh, once again, a number that that Jeanette gets from the people we deal with. I don't have too much to say over that. Uh, utilities uh projected to, we are budgeted eighteen thousand this year, projected to to end around twenty thousand. I thought that number was at first a little high, but then with a bunch of storms that we had, we had some power outages where the generator, the uh gas power generator was running for a while. So it's probably gonna be a more accurate number than I was hoping for it to be. I took that utility number and just rolled it into two thousand twenty twenty four. Building maintenance. Almost hadn't been to say anything, but knock on wood. Besides the door that malfunctioned, the ma- the building has been doing very, very good this year. We haven't had a lot of building maintenance problems with the building outside of that one garage door. So right now, we're very much so under under our projected amount in the actual budget versus what we were were budgeted for. Uh, but tw- if you look back at once again, previous years, twenty four thousand is definitely closer to what our average would be there. I don't think it's wise to. That especially with the aging HVAC units that we've talked about in the past and just the building as a whole aging. Uh, minor equipment, we were budgeted seventy five hundred two thousand twenty three. Uh, we're gonna probably come in a little bit under budget there, but I think seventy five hundred is is a good place to remain. So if you look at the the operating budget. From two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty four, the total did go up. Uh, a little bit. Most of that is increases in uh manpower. The salaries for officers, salaries for uh the staffing program. And uh.
Could say that for virtually every single budget we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, then moving down from there, now we get into some some deeper it deeper items. Uh, there's some principal payments for the fire truck that was part of uh a mortgage for the new fire station. That will be ending in two thousand twenty six. Unfortunately, we're not there yet, but that's an obligation that we have to continue to pay until that point. Um, interest on the expenses, the interest expense on the loans that once again has to do with that same, that same loan that was pulled for the fire station. And then moving into capital. So uh what Jeanette did, what Jeanette did for twenty twenty three year end was she took the price of the garage door. And then because we factored in the sale of the new fire truck.
Right, that we did that.
Okay, the I'm sorry, not the sale, the credit that we got back from the new engine, that money that's remaining where they said. We collected some interest from your truck or from your money while your truck wasn't completed and we get they gave it back to us. Um, so she took that amount of money minus the cost of the door and that is the remaining. The remaining amount of money that the borough would have to pay for the door. This year when the door comes. Hmm, so put that in as a capital item.
Twenty six thousand.
Yep, that number, okay. Um, I know that Tony too, she said that Western Berks would be willing to pay for a portion of the door. I don't know where we stand on that topic. But that could also decrease that number further.
And we're just talking about the one bay.
Right.
The one bay, yes.
It's yeah, broken, broken.
The one bay that is out of service.
Okay.
At the door and that that Kerry has worked with Ben Druck and the door is ordered and it's in the process of being made and.
Okay.
Do we have a timeline on that?
He was hoping like six to eight weeks. Uh, and we're probably we're like four weeks now.
I think he said twelve, but the engineering was six to eight or something.
Yeah, we were six to eight. Engineering is the biggest part of it. Once engineering comes through and because there's a little, the way that wall sits, you have a. I redesigned one side of the door a little bit, so it all he gets the full width of the door. Uh, but.
Yeah, I remember you saying this.
So we're still hoping by the end of the year? Yeah.
Yeah.
To be in some.
Yeah.
It sounds like that's definitely feasible.
Yeah.
All right, so then I'm gonna go across that capital line. So then in two thousand twenty four, I'm requesting to budget fifty nine thousand. Considering there's gonna maybe some price escalation for uh the replacement of another garage door. I think that is just good, makes sense. Plus, I had uh Bill Bennett and submitted a grant on our behalf for the replacement of another door. So hopefully that goes through. If that goes through, then that that capital item will be offset for for next year. If it doesn't, I think it's still something that we need to to continue to to push forward with. Um, twenty twenty five, there was uh eighty thousand dollars. I project for the replacement of the utility because that truck will be ten years old. At that point, we'll go replace the former or the current fire police vehicle. So we'll get more life out of that. Um, and on back on that revenue side, there was a transfer in twenty twenty five from that reserve. And eighty thousand dollars because that money is sitting there in that reserve earmarked for the replacement of that utility. Uh, in twenty twenty six, moving out there in capital. We would have one after taking the break off in twenty twenty five to get the uh utility, we would have one garage door left to replace. That I I think we should probably do at that point. And then looking all the way out to twenty twenty seven, and these are just, this is just a ballpark number. Um, the engine floor, the firehouse floor coating that's on the floor is starting to deteriorate. It's probably time where it needs to be resurfaced to prevent water from seeping down into cracks and and breaking up the concrete floor itself. Um, and then also uh put in there some, I said, I just put in a ballpark number of forty thousand. I don't know what that firehouse floor is actually gonna cost. Because I didn't get prices yet.
I'm sure KT knows a guy.
Yeah. But uh we also also uh lumped in ten thousand in twenty twenty seven for.
For an HVAC replacement.
Because there's no way one's not gonna break. For that point.
Are the uh state fire commissioner grants annual or is it every other year?
The so this, the grant, the capital project grant that we apply for this year is a new grant that they have never run before. So I don't know at this point if that grant is gonna continue to be offered every year or if it was just a one-time thing. If it is offered again, I'll certainly apply for it again.
So potentially we could apply for a grant in twenty twenty five for the last door.
And we could, yes.
We could, yep.
I didn't wanna put that much of a, well. There is money earmarked for utility. So, right, we could, we could move that up if an opportunity presented itself. And if we don't get it, then we don't do it and we wait till twenty six, right? Um, so if you. Uh, so four four eighty one eight hundred is just the the fire transfer to the. The uh capital, which that covers the obligation, right? The general obligation bond. That's what the fire department's portion is. Uh, four four nine two zero six one is that money that came in. Times agencies that go to the relief association associations, such as the in and the out of that money. That money goes to the assoc- uh, the relief association. It pays for some additional insurance policy. It pays for all uh fire department personnel training that they go to. That costs money from the uh the community colleges and and fire schools. And uh it covers the maintenance on all of the uh SCBA breathing apparatus. And then by the time the end of the year comes around, that money is all, it's it's gone. Some departments like Y Missing have millions of dollars in their relief associations. They continue to get more money because they don't have volunteers to spend the money on. We're fortunate enough to have. Spend it on training and. And everything. So if you look at the very bottom is the from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty three, we passed the fire department budget with a thirty one thousand dollar uh deficit. It's gonna be, we're gonna end up being in a less uh lower deficit than that. Um, that door, the number for that door needing to be replaced, if it wasn't for that, we probably would be even. In in twenty twenty three.
Also factors that was the um expense for the insurance claim.
The insurance claim too, yes.
Okay, we got the revenue.
Even next year's budget is basically a wash if you find a grant for that bay door.
Correct.
Right.
So.
So there's really very, very minimal change in the fire department's operating budget. It's really just the capital items. And how we fund those capital items over the next couple of years.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Chad? Do you have any thoughts, opinions or feedback on Mark's comments earlier?
Uh, so what? The hardest part of this is honestly manpower. Well, Mark said isn't wrong. In a perfect world, the whole thing would be would be funded and and it would be, it would be really easier for people to deal with. Um, but um, I feel I feel comfortable in my position now. I don't, I'm not, I didn't ask Mark to come and do that. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. But but to me, the the thing that that council needs to keep an eye on the most is is manpower from a firefighter perspective. It's harder and harder to find volunteers who are able to put in amounts of time. If we lose one, it takes us many years to get somebody new trained to the level that they could replace. The knowledge and experience of one of those people. So right now, we're continuing to to limp the volunteer service along, but it it's a dying, a dying thing. It's it's falling apart. All across Pennsylvania and across the country. So it's just something that we need to keep an eye on moving forward. If opportunities come up or discussions come up to talk about merging with Spring Y Missing, those type of things. Those are conversations that we should be having and and not just dismissing. We're in a spot where we can sustain, but how long we sustain is only gonna be possible with the manpower that we have and how long we can keep them. So my from from a from manpower, from a manpower paid perspective, my concern is more manpower than it is a paid administrator.
I got Pat.
Yeah, you got Pat.
Do you feel like our manpower issues are? As bad as everyone else, not quite as bad, worse? Where do you feel like we stand in the spectrum of?
I think we are.
Volunteers.
In the scheme of things, I think we are in a much better position than most.
Okay.
Um, like I said, like I touched on earlier, Y Missing, it's almost to the point where they have no volunteers.
They have paid up.
Paid, they're paid, they're fully paid. They may have one volunteer on the books and they have a couple of volunteers who go to a meeting to discuss how much money they have in their relief association. But um, Greenfields down up by the airport, they are failing on a lot of calls. In fact, us and the city are are taking over a lot of their calls. Um, they're lucky if they have an officer and they're even luckier if they get a truck out. Some places like Kenhurst, they're do- Kenhurst is in a similar, but we are, we we both are doing very, very well compared to the companies around us. Um, Spring Township is doing still kind of strong just because of the size of their municipality or township. Um, they're dwindling in numbers, but they're still big enough that they're able to keep enough to be functioning, but they're looking at hiring additional firefighters.
They still have volunteers?
Uh, they do have some volunteers, yes. Yeah, but they have, they, yeah, they're paid around the clock and they're looking at adding more uh personnel this year, I guess they're requesting. But we're we're definitely on the positive side of manpower loss, but it's a problem that we can't, you know, it it we need, it needs to be talked about. We can't just say everything's fine, this will go on forever. Cause it'll, I think eventually get to a point where we just don't have people to reliably get the trucks out all the time, every time.
It's just merger talks with someone like Spring and Y O will come at a cost and it will be.
Yes.
Much higher cost than what we currently pay.
Yes, sure. So, but if those, like I said, if those topics come up, it's something that I am certainly willing to sit down and talk with them or talk with anybody and. You know, just, I think it's worth talking about, is all I'm saying. And then whether it's financially responsible for the borough and we can do it or not, that's a whole different conversation.
You're willing to have it with police, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is coming down the pike too. So potential merger, you're not looking at necessarily merging two volunteers, volunteer departments, hoping that you have enough volunteers to now. Cover everything between two departments, right? You're looking at moving fully paid once a merger.
No, that wouldn't, so, well, it would depend. Um, it would depend on what the two municipalities would work out. Um, if if it got to that point where we had to do it, we'd be doing it because we'd be out of manpower deficiency. So we would hopefully still be able to provide some volunteers, but how much worth they will find in those volunteers and how much they feel that that will offset what the borough would have to. Pay to provide service or contribute to provide service, that's a different. the borough would have to pay to provide service or contribute to provide service, that's a different, a different topic.
Is there any economy of scale with potentially like Kenhurst is still volunteer, like if, you know, grouping together some of the volunteer areas. Is there any like scalable things within this budget that would be cheaper to do it at a much larger scale that might prolong, you know, having a volunteer service? Obviously, it's not gonna be like engines and stuff.
No, and and really in terms of like, like.
Turnout here is cheaper in, you know, larger quantities and things like that.
It's, it's really not too much cheaper in large, because they they charge for, they charge per piece. They don't really give discounts on on buying more of them. Now, that's saying, I'm saying that, but if somebody like FDNY buys jackets, I'm sure they get a better price than I get. But I don't know that there'd be a real big noticeable. Uh, we do, we do go together on some grants, so uh, for example, uh, our air packs are getting to the point where they need to be replaced. I went, I did a regional grant or Bill Bennett and wrote a regional grant for us, us as the host with four other regional departments to try to get money to replace the air pack. So there are things like that that we currently do to try to keep costs low, but.
Well, plus shrinking from three huge apparatus down to two is a hell.
And they're always, so the staffing program currently is working very well for during the day. And if it wasn't for that, I would be under a ton of stress. And my willingness to say I will continue to do what I'm doing for as long as I can is extended by that being there. If it wasn't for that, I'd be under a tremendous amount of stress during the day to get fire trucks out. And and it would almost get to the point where it would probably become unbearable. So the staffing program is really helped during the day. So before it got to the point where we merged, my suggestion would be to extend the staffing program another eight hour period to extend that guaranteed coverage. You know, and then our our call volume overnight, in the overnight period is really the lowest that it is all day long. So, I mean, I think that, I don't think we need to do it now, but I think that is a conversation that would happen before we we fully said we can't do this anymore.
So we're likely not gonna be blindsided by that conversation of.
I I hope, I hope not. I hope not, but it all comes down to manpower. If everybody tomorrow decides that they are done doing this.
Right.
Right now, it's my job to try to make sure that this doesn't happen, which.
How do your volunteer ranks compare from last year at this time to right now?
They're pretty stable. We have, we've had some new people, we've had some new younger people, which is always good. We've got some new, we got Patrick who's also. Volunteering, I didn't say older.
I'll be older, yeah, I know.
Older, older, when I say older, I mean not in the junior program.
I'll be there tomorrow night for training, so.
Yeah, we've got some, some young kids who who live around here and who who join, so that's good.
Great.
Yeah, it's very good.
It's impressive if, for anyone who has gone on the the burn to try being a firefighter. It's incredibly difficult just on so many levels, but just even having the equipment on your body. Like, you know, that we have people willing to do this is incredible.
Yeah, take, take the danger out of it. It's just exhausting. A lot, it's a lot of work. When he says manpower, that's exactly what that is.
Risking injury and.
And these people all have full-time jobs, like a lot of these people, like we all have full-time jobs. You, you wear many hats.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
And the line item for paying our leaders is concerning, you know, what you're doing for for your community for very little pay. Special.
It is, it is offset a little bit because in in, with clarity, um, some of our our uh, officers do participate also in the staffing program, so they're able to get a little bit extra there by signing up for shifts and running, you know, being that guaranteed person who's gonna get the truck out, but, but uh, it it's it's low, but it's what it, it's what it is, is what the budget allows and, you know, you're willing to continue to do it where we're at now, so I think uh, you know, the the three point five percent in, or three point two five percent increase that everybody else is the, I think, I think it's, it fits.
Well, they're doing an invaluable service.
So, that's another statement.
Does anybody have any other questions on the fire budget?
All right, thank you for explaining all that, Chad. Appreciate it. Said, I gave you that little cheat sheet if you, if you wanna look back at anything later on down the road or if you have any questions, you know, I'd get ahold of me.
Very easy to read.
Gladly answer any questions with that.
Like Ryan said, if you get the grant, you're bound, you're balanced.
Yes.
Not bad. All right, so with that, I will uh, end discussion on the budget and move into our second round of public comments. Jim?
He has a hundred forty-seven. That's the core goal of what is the system. His form letter in question, he's been back three years. He read you are responsible, Davis, you know, for three years. So hopefully, a hundred forty-seven might maybe a dollar per per account, thanks for putting it in the budget. Hopefully that means some dollars.
Hope one.
Who been cheating in the years in getting away with so many missile issues. And in front of all, and the next month, we can see how many more is that, because it's still working on the information I supplied to you. Which I still pay himself as we do. They have, some way I didn't have before.
Well, this is why we wanted to make the change to Berkhimer, so. Glad to hear that it's working out in your estimation, so. We'll see if it uh, follows through with the uh, budget. Delinquencies and whatnot, so. All right, uh, nobody else online, thankfully, that guy gave up. So I will uh, you know, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Which made by Ms. Drobnek. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed.
Kerry's.